Okay, if everyone be seated, we're going to call back to order the Monday, October 17th Planning Board meeting. All right, Mr. Tyson?
All right.
Take it away.
Tonight, the proposed Nash County 2022 Comprehensive Land Use Plan is being presented to the Nash County Planning Board for review and recommendation. The purpose of the plan is to recognize present trends and future needs in order to establish goals and policies that will guide the growth and development of the rural unincorporated areas of Nash County over the next 10 to 20 years. The full version of the plan, as well as the draft future land use map, have been and continue to be available for review online at our project website. The plan was prepared by Stuart, our consultant, under the oversight of the Nash County Land Use Plan Steering Committee. That's a joint committee consisting of three county commissioners and four planning board members. The planning board was last updated on the status of the plan back on July 18th. Since that time, the county held three public meetings to present the draft plan and to solicit written and online comments. Those meetings were held August 16th, 23rd, and 25th at the Nash County Administration Building here in this room, the Drake Community Center, and the Southern Nash Senior Center. The plan was finalized by the steering committee on September 8th and recommended for approval by the Technical Review Committee on October 11th. Tonight, the planning board is charged with making a recommendation on the plan to the Nash County Board of Commissioners. That recommendation can be for approval, for approval with modifications, or for denial. That recommendation will be heard by the commissioners at a public hearing and vote on the actual adoption of the plan, which is tentatively scheduled right now for Monday, November the 7th during the board's regular monthly meeting, which begins at 9:00 a.m. And of course, we will make a further announcement finalizing that date and whether there will be any restrictions on time limits or anything like that for the public comment on this matter. With that, I want to turn it over to Jaquisha Cologne, who represents Stuart, our consultant. She's going to take us through a series of slides on the creation of the plan and what the plan includes. Then I'm going to come back up and clarify some specific points, and then I want to review the public comment policy one more time before we open the floor to the public.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go over this pretty quickly. I know that we've met about this before, and a couple of you are on the steering committee, so it's going to be a lot of familiar information. Just going to touch over the process, the engagement, the plan, goals, and the land use map and recommendations, and what updates were made since the public meetings, and then the next steps. So the purpose of a future land use plan is to have a community conversation and to discuss the vision and goals with the community and document them into a plan. And part of this is to make sure that it is 160D compliant and to update the future land use map to reflect the current needs and trends, with the overall goal of enhancing the quality of life and providing guidance for the planning board and board commissioners in making decisions regarding projects, funding, and policy for the next 10 to 20 years. We are at the end of the planning process, getting ready to go into adoption meetings. And you can see kind of that we are in October of 2022. And during the course of the engagement, we met with over 30 stakeholders, we had eight steering committee meetings, the website received over 1,100 views, and we had about 600 survey respondents. And here are the members of our steering committee. The goals that were written in results of the engagement process are shown here, and they are listed in no particular order. To anticipate purposeful residential growth through infrastructure and utility planning in the unincorporated parts of the county, to implement the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan, to support the desired growth pattern, to preserve the county's agricultural heritage protection programs and support farmers and ag operations, to protect the natural environment, specifically water resources and forested areas, and to expand the park system by providing a variety of accessible and equitable facilities, programs, and opportunities. The future land use map is shown here. Three very big things. There's one large residential and agricultural area shown in green. And it's important to note that lots of 2,000 square feet or less are not recommended in areas where there is not public water and sewer service. Lots of 30,000 square feet are recommended throughout the green area with or without public water service. The recommendations in the plan are shown here. They're divided up into five groups: land use, economic development, parks and recreation, transportation, and infrastructure, utilities, and services. And they are in the document there at the end of each chapter on each subject. The big ideas are shown here. And here are for the other two groups. And a major update to the plans from the last meetings, what we heard through those three public meetings, were a lot of comments on the size of lots, protection of farmland and forested areas, greater efforts to expand broadband access, and requiring solar farms to perform a performance guarantee for dismantling and cleanup. From that, we have three major updates to the plan. The land use action item was added: consider or explore opportunities to require solar farms to provide a performance guarantee for dismantling and cleanup when the use has been discontinued. Under Parks and Recreation, explore opportunities to enhance programming needs of youth, senior, and disabled populations. And for the future land use map, the addition of a commercial character area outside of Rocky Mount along US 64, that is a small red dot shown with the yellow arrow in the map insert. After that, the next steps are the recommendations to the board commissioners and the upcoming tentative November 7th adoption date. And that is all I have. Adam?
I want to point out that the plan is over a year in the making. We've been working on it since September of 2021, so it is certainly not something that the county has taken lightly. The land use plan is not optional. The state law requires any jurisdiction that's going to enforce zoning regulations to have a land use plan and to keep that plan relatively up to date. The land use plan, however, is not regulatory. It does not establish laws, and it does not establish regulations that have to be followed. It's advisory in nature. It becomes the lens through which the county evaluates planning and development decisions, but its not binding on our board of commissioners, who remain free to use their best judgment. It strives to bring some consistency to the process, but not in such a stringent way that the board of commissioners can't step outside of the plan if the particular circumstances call for it. Agriculture remains exempt from zoning regulations in North Carolina. Obviously, this plan does not have the authority to do anything different. The plan does explicitly recommend continued support for our voluntary traditional and enhanced ag district programs to preserve farmland from development. I want to make it clear that the zoning map and the future land use map, which is a part of this plan, and if Mr. Edwards could put the future land use map up on the screen, or maybe Mr. Culpepper. This map and the zoning map are not the same. This map is a vision for what the county wants to move toward. The zoning map are the actual regulatory zoning districts that are in place. The adoption of this plan does not automatically change the zoning map. The zoning map would only change incrementally as this board and the board of commissioners review actual specific rezoning requests. And the plan would become the criteria by which the staff report on those zoning requests would be written. There's very little change to the areas on this map that were already designated for commercial or industrial development in our already existing plan. There were a few rural crossroads that had been previously identified in the old plan for commercial development that have been removed simply because in the last 20 years there's been no movement toward commercial development at those nodes. There is the one small additional commercial area that's just north of Nash Community College, right on the edge of Rocky Mount's extraterritorial jurisdiction that Jaquisha mentioned in the little inset map. I believe that's the only commercial development area that was added, and it is not very substantive in terms of size. The county's planning and development authority obviously does not extend into our municipalities or their ETJs, so our towns and the city of Rocky Mount remain free to make their own planning and development decisions within their own jurisdictions. At the heart of the plan is this future land use map that you see on the screen, and it is really a result of a compromise between the members of our steering committee. On the one hand, this map reduces support for the 20,000-square-foot residential lots that have become somewhat common over the past two years in the rezoning requests that were reviewed by this board. The current land use plan that's in effect recommended 20,000-square-foot lots throughout the county wherever public water was present. The new plan would limit the recommendation for 20,000-square-foot lots to only areas where public water and sewer is available. And that is a significant limitation, given the very limited amount of sewer that we have in Nash County. There's an area along NC Highway 97 between the edge of the city of Rocky Mount extending out to about Joiner's Crossroads with the Food Line Shopping Center, where Nash County has the ability to attach to that sewer line for residential development. The county has additional sewer line available extended beyond that point and north of Nashville, but the contractual agreements that are in place for those sewer lines limit their development for commercial or industrial use only. And so at this time, that one strip outside of Highway 97 is really the only viable area where a lot, 20,000 square foot, could be permitted. At this time, the expansion of sewer by a private developer remains a very expensive proposition, and that is not expected to change in the near future. I did say this was a compromise, so on the one hand, you have reduced support for 20,000 square-foot lots, but there is increased support for 30,000 square-foot lots. In the old map that this map replaces, the default recommendation for lot size throughout the county where there was no public water was 40,000 square feet, about nine tenths of an acre. The plan now recommends a default lot size of the slightly smaller 30,000 square-foot lots. And so whereas there is less support, or severely less support for 20,000 square-foot lots, this plan really embraces 30,000 square-foot lots as a recommendation for the remainder of the rural portion of the county's jurisdiction. The new criteria that are linked to this plan will become effective as soon as the plan is adopted. So the following set of rezonings that are submitted after the adoption of the plan will be evaluated according to the criteria of the new plan instead of the old plan. What will take a little longer will be to enact a set of recommendations from this plan that have to do with actually changing the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance. And again, those regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance are not advisory, they are regulatory. And so once they're amended, the developers are required to follow them. The recommended changes to the Unified Development Ordinance include, but are not limited to: Number one, considering requirements to reduce potential conflicts between residential development and existing agricultural operations. And that could be through requiring developers to provide open space, separation distances, or vegetated buffers between new neighborhoods and existing agricultural operations. Number two, we aim to further reduce new driveway access on the heavily traveled roads by encouraging or requiring lots to be accessed by new roads interior to the neighborhood development. Number three, consider the increase of front building setbacks along heavily traveled roads to ensure that new homes are located further back from the road itself. Number four, the adoption of more stringent cluster subdivision requirements. These would include only allowing clustering from 40,000 to 30,000, no further clustering to be allowed down to 20,000 square-foot lots. In addition to that, an increased open space requirement and a minimum requirement for a certain percentage of that open space to be usable for neighborhood recreation purposes. Finally, another recommendation of the plan would be to amend the ordinance to require shorter block lengths inside neighborhoods and increase connectivity standards between adjacent neighborhoods to improve the walkability and to reduce traffic congestion. Now, the subject matter of the plan is understandably complex, and some degree of confusion is to be expected, if not inevitable. So before we open the floor to public comment, I did want to take a moment to address some inaccuracies that I've seen recently in local media and social media, just to make sure we're all on the same page. There was a statement that the plan cuts the minimum required lot size for new single-family homes in half. As we've already discussed, the new plan should result in far fewer 20,000 square-foot lots than the current land use plan has over the past two to three years. There is a reduction in the lot size recommended for areas without public water service from 40,000 to 30,000 square feet, but that's only a 25% reduction, not a 50% reduction. Number two, there have been claims that the plan will allow two houses per acre. Again, for the majority of the county, the plan would recommend a 30,000-square-foot lot size, which comes out to about 1.45 homes per acre. And finally, there has been criticism of the county's public outreach efforts. We have used every digital means available to us, including the online survey, the project website, our email notification lists, and the county's social media accounts to make citizens aware of this plan. We want to especially thank those in our local media and newspapers who have been sure to advertise our public meetings throughout the process. But I would note that a single mailer sent regular mail to each household of Nash County would have likely doubled the cost of the plan. So we hope that we've struck a balance between providing good public notice and transparency, but also being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. Before we begin the public comment, I do want to review the public comment policy for those that might not have been present at the beginning of tonight's meeting. But before I do that, I want to pause and just take any questions that the board may have on the plan.
Anybody on the board having questions for Mr. Tyson at this point? Okay, go forward.
All right. So each individual tonight will be permitted to speak once on the plan for a maximum of three minutes. No time may be yielded or transferred from one speaker to another. The board clerk to my right will call time when the three minutes have expired. To avoid repetition, we do ask that groups of individuals supporting the same position consider designating a spokesperson to address the board on their behalf. Again, that's just to save time and to avoid repetition. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I believe we can open the floor.
All right, sounds good. Okay, who here from the public would like to speak? And do ask anyone that speaks, please give your name so we can have it recorded.
Give us just a second to switch back over to that document camera.
My name is Bryce Pike, Pike Law Firm, Moorhead City, Nash County native. I have a lot of family that lives here and a lot of clients. In October of last year, a countywide survey was conducted, and one of the questions that was asked is, what do you see as priority issues or needs for the Nash County to consider in its comprehensive plan? The top answer was the loss of farmland impacts on natural areas. The second, or another question that was asked is, what are your land use and development priorities for Nash County? The top response was loss of farmland and impacts to natural areas. Another question that was asked is, where should the county help guide new development? The top choice was in existing towns and cities. Based on these answers, the steering committee came up with the plan goals. The number one plan goal was to preserve existing agricultural land and support farmers According to the State Office of Budgetment and Management information, Nash County's population is expected to increase by a little over 1,300 people by now in 2040, requiring an additional 233 homes in the county. And further, the residential development will create a deficit for the county instead of the surplus. I didn't prepare any of these slides. This was all prepared by the Stuart group, and I'm just sharing this with y'all. The Stuart group, based on, there are a variety of different plans that were presented. The one where we arrived at, the Stuart group determined when they were evaluating the different plans that the result of it, as you can see in this slide right here, would be more sprawling development, negative impacts on ag operation, negative impacts on existing communities, and higher costs of services, which is fire, schools, et cetera. At some point, well, in June of this year, the plan goals, which were originally started with preserving agriculture, were modified. These modifications and changes in the land use plan that's currently before you is not what was set out, as I said, this, the steering committee. How it changed, I don't know, but I think this needs to be revisited, and I think that the state's information and the Stuart group's information needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm Jane Flowers Finch. I'm an attorney from Raleigh, but I'm a native of Nash County. I'm a property owner here, and my mother is a resident here, and I'm down here at least five days, four to five days a week. I've appeared before you previously. I want to follow up. I agree with Mr. Pike. I would encourage you to delay reviewing this. If you go through the details, preserving the agriculture property, and I am extremely concerned about the flood opening the countywide zoning to R-30. That's .688 acres. We know there are a lot of developers eager to move in here, and that's, maybe we want to do that, but this county is not prepared to handle that kind of development. I live in Raleigh. My son-in-law is a developer. My husband's work is a commercial real estate attorney, and we've seen that. And in Johnston County, where my husband is from, and in Nash County, I'm seeing it. We don't have, in Johnston County, you had developers giving lands for schools and more planning. If you just go out here and start letting everybody just put these little developments out here, it's not a good idea. And so, and if you look at your county articles and your laws in your county, when you do look at zoning regulations, you have to look at the public health, safety, and welfare. And so you can't just generically go out here and say we're just going to have people have R-30 lots all over the county. And I am very much concerned about public safety. Our public safety is lacking in Nash County significantly. Fire, and in parts of the county, we're still depending on volunteer fire departments unless we're going to make arrangements to get the funds to start having paid firemen. And if you live in the southern end of the county and you have to call Rescue Squad or the fire department or the sheriff's department, you know, you're looking at 30 minutes sometimes, 20 or 30 minutes to get somebody there. And so we also need to be concerned, too, if we open up this development. I know that there are big corporations that want to come into Nash County and put in subdivisions, and it'll be rental. There will not be landowners. They will own it and rent it. And there's legally, you cannot agree to rezone or allow somebody to do that and tell them that they can't rent it. You can't do that. The law won't allow it. So you need to be careful if we're going to go out here and have the whole county zoned R-30, and they're going to come in here. I know for a fact that there are companies looking to come in here and buy land and put in those kinds of subdivisions, not only in Nash County, but in Johnston County and in Northern Wake County and some of these counties around here. And you hear about it happening. We do need, we want development and growth, but we want smart development and growth. I mean really smart development and growth. We can be the perfect ideal county. That's what I want in Nash County. This was a beautiful place for me to grow up, and I love it, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Louise Finch, and I'm a resident at 4462 Stony Hill Church Road. I'm here, and I thank you all for listening to me tonight. What's the big thing about farming? Just so you understand, some of the language is put in here to soften the blow and to get people on board with it, because while you understand what you're saying, not everyone that is on the board of commissioners feels the same way. This is just a switch and bait. That's right. It's like a sales trade. Excuse me. It's a switch and bait, and that's right. It's just an easier thing, a pill to swallow. I watched the video of the meeting y'all had in July, and it was hurtful. What's the big thing about farming? And I, really? Come on. The people, this is, we're the second largest, third, sweet potato growers in the state of North Carolina. North Carolina's the number one sweet potato producers in the world. And you look at the map and what was done, it's totally against what people voted for. So what if it was 500, four people? It was the voice of the people, not yours. The people. Why the county commissioners were voted to put in office, how y'all got in these seats. And I beg to say, if we look back at the past four years at some of these projects that have been done, should some of these folks who voted on these things, should they have voted? Is their family doing some of the business deals with some of this new zoning and development? Not a speculation. Has there been a request made to look at this, the conversations that have had, the This is a big decision, and I think it's very shameful to even have that public. It's so embarrassing. Go back and take a look at your video. It was an hour and a half, and I transcribed it, and you can do that on Google and YouTube. It's really embarrassing, and it's hurtful. And it's hurtful to the people who put you in these seats. It's hurtful for the people who are out there in the fields right now, still getting sweet potatoes up, planting the strawberries, doing the tobacco to feed y'all, to feed this country, to dress them, to wear the clothes, butter on your back, not cotton from China, cotton from North Carolina. It's a shame, shameful. You should be embarrassed. Y'all already know how I feel. Majority of the county does for the past two years. Think about the mouth and the hand that feeds you, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
My name is Greg Byrne, President, Nash County Farm Bureau, and I'd like to read the statement from the Bureau. On behalf of the Nash County Farm Bureau Board of Directors, I would like to express Nash County Farm Bureau's opposition to the county's proposed land use plan that's currently drafted. As a representative of Nash County's farm families, we are concerned that the proposed plan will allow for unbridled residential development in the county without adequate plans to address the negative impact that this development will have on the county's school system infrastructure and public safety. The proposed plan also appears to conflict with public input regarding the plan and the advice provided by the county's planning consultant, who demonstrated a lack of sufficient demand to support substantial residential development. The proposed land use plan will change the character of Nash County forever. Numerous studies show that unplanned residential development imposes significant cost on county residents. Random residential development does not guarantee sustainable development. Instead of inviting haphazard development, the county should invest in improvements to the county's municipalities. These investments will enhance business opportunities and enable the county's rural areas to grow from the towns out. We believe the proposed plan fails to take into account the input and concerns of all citizens of Nash County. Therefore, we urge you to listen carefully to the desires of the citizens and encourage you to talk with the sheriff, EMS, and fire departments regarding public safety concerns, as well as the county's school board, school administrators, and teachers. Most importantly, we ask that you talk with Nash County farmers. With additional input and deliberation, the proposed plan can be modified to account for the unique needs of Nash County and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Name is Kyle Pritchard, 211 East Nash Street in Spring Hope. And we all know that if we take a hammer and a chisel and we chip at a rock hard enough and long enough, it'll eventually crumble. And we know that if we let that R-20 start to slip in now, the R-10's going to slip in right behind it. And so, it's about protecting Nash County and our way of life. That's why I'm here tonight. So it's a real treat to ride the backroads and enjoy our countryside right now. It's so beautiful because it's not overdeveloped with houses stacked on top of each other. If we wanted to live in a crowded urban environment, we would have moved to Wake County. I'm here tonight to try to protect Nash County and the people's way of life, specifically to speak up for people that are often not heard and not represented. On page 41 of your plan, it says the minimum allowable residential lot sizes should typically be at least 30,000 square feet, although lots of at least 20,000 square feet are permitted if both public water and sewer services are available. Now, we know that Bailey and Middlesex are in a moratorium, and we know that there's going to be a county substation out there for sewer, and there's going to be water lines run there. It's only a matter of time before water and sewer are both available, and that growth is going to crowd right up to the city limits of both Middlesex and Bailey, giving them nowhere to grow. So it's not just about us losing our way of life, our agriculture and rural, southern, eastern, north Carolina way of life. It's also about being fair and transparent with the other small towns in the county. It's about letting them grow together with you all when you grow. Some of the things I want to point out on pages 20 and 21, which were the priorities you found, the gentleman in the back mentioned it, 66% of people reducing loss impact natural resources to farmland. Now, I know that the proposal is that this R-20 should be interior roads, but at the end of the day, it's going to be subdivision after subdivision lined up on our county roads with 20,000 lots inside. And like I said, that 20,000 is going to eventually be clustered down. Now, you said earlier that the county commissioners get the right to overrule anything, and that once this plan goes through and the zoning changes are made, that's that. That's the end of the story. So it's important that we stop this now. We shouldn't allow 30,000. We shouldn't allow 20,000. We need to keep it at 40,000 in the unincorporated land. The stakeholders said that they want to learn how to deal and address the smaller lots. They want larger lots, and they want increased regulations to anticipate and prevent urbanization. All I'm asking you guys to do is to listen to the feedback that the people gave you and do what they asked you to do. That's it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Going once? Twice? All right, that's going to end.
I got one.
Squeaked in. Upset bid, right here.
Hi, my name is David Geiger. I'm with Little Bear Creek Properties. Little Bear Creek Properties is a family-owned developer. I know that we've heard a lot of speaking tonight from our folks who want to support farmland, and we also work with farmers and farmlands in the area. We are, as I said, a small, family-owned business. We are operating out of the base here in North Carolina. I've lived here for 40 years myself. And, you know, I just want to point out that developers aren't, you know, these evil three-headed monsters that we sometimes are made out to be. We work with local farmers, local landowners. When we come into a community, we do our best to work with the people who live there. For example, there's a farmer on an adjacent property to where we are now. He wanted to cross our property to go over, cross our development, to go over and pull some water from an adjacent stream. We worked with him and allowed that. The project we're working on right now is going to divert some of the stormwater that we produce from our neighborhood and put that into a bed that's currently a dry pond and fill that so it can be used by farmers. So, you know, we're not coming in just trying to pillage and destroy the area. We're coming in, working as neighbors in our neighborhood with people in the area. We're doing that in a way, I think, trying to build a good community. The reduction of lot sizes down to 30,000 square feet is not something unheard of. In fact, we've already, it's an opportunity now that's in the current law. We have built houses in communities with 30,000 square feet. We've had neighbors living in there for over a year now in a 30,000 square foot development, and we haven't seen any catastrophes. We haven't seen any public safety issues, and we haven't seen the kind of things I've heard concerns about. So I'm not saying that's not a concern. I'm just saying we haven't seen that in the developments that are already happening with those size lots available. Last thing I'll say is, making the lot sizes smaller will help houses be more affordable. And I think that's something we can all get behind, is to help the community grow in a responsible way so that we have homeowners able to come into the county and spend their tax dollars here and produce revenue for the county. Last thing I'll say is that, again, as a business owner, we do our best to work with and buy things from locally owned supply houses and hardware stores and restaurants. And so, we are putting money back in the community. That's the last thing I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Hello, my name is Deidra Hall, 2434 North Oak Franklin Road in Spring Hope. I won't be before you long. I just want you to think about the fact that we lived in Raleigh before we moved to Nash County. And it's been said before that, you know, if we wanted the fast life, we would have stayed there. I really encourage you all to look at what happened to Raleigh and what happened to Wake County, just within the last 10 to 15 years. I lived there for almost 20, and I saw it go from a nice, almost family-oriented place to be, to being somewhere where you're almost, yeah, kind of scared to have your kids out at certain times and certain places and different things like that. The growth was way too fast there. They weren't ready to be able to have the kind of people that were coming to come there as quickly as they were. The infrastructure, as far as police officers, and I remember there was a time where a police officer was able to go out, if a crime was committed, they were able to go out and close the case right away. Crime is starting to become, I mean, we saw what just happened not too long ago. And while they, while they were able to go ahead and do what they did with finding a young man, I mean, there's crimes that are happening there that weren't happening there before all the time. So just think about the smaller communities that are going to have to deal with the influx of people and what people bring to the table when they come. They come with all of their, all of, I don't want to say baggage, but just so much, a different way of life, a different way of thinking. And that's going to clash with the people that are already there that have had their homes, had their families living there for I don't know how long. The property value, when a property value shoots through the roof, are the people that have already been living there, are they going to be able to be able to keep up? That's been happening in Raleigh now, where there, people have been living in generational homes that can't afford to live there anymore because the growth is so fast and so big, they can't keep their homes and their families anymore. They're losing their homes left and right. And that's not fair to the people that actually live there and put time in, put sweat, put tears into their homes and into their families that live there. And the last thing I just want to say is, if we want to be able to live as a community when new people move in, think about the people that have already lived there doing country things. We see in Knightdale what had happened between the people that were living there already. They're going to have to give up their way of life, shooting guns or whatever they do, because new people have moved in that don't understand that way of life, and they're not comfortable living right next to them. The developers come in and develop everything, and then they leave, and now you have two communities that are not used to being together, not knowing how to live together, and now they're fighting against each other trying to justify one way of living versus the other. So just think about the people that are going to be left in the wake of everything once everything is developed and going on, and the developers have made their money and they're gone. So, that's it.
Jeff Tyson, 828 Evans Road, Nashville. I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into this plan, and there have been some changes made that have, concessions made to go from 20,000 to 30,000 square foot And as the gentleman, the contractor mentioned a while ago, these developments have gone in and haven't seen any issues with them as of yet. My concern is that we get to the point that these divisions that are here and there are no longer here and there, they're everywhere. You don't have to look very far to the south, to Johnston County, or to the west, into Wake County. These are the things that I'm concerned about. I'm also concerned about the safety on the highways for now. A lot of these bigger developments have gone in in the southern part of the county on secondary roads that have no shoulder and that are very dated, let's say. I see the same roads in the northern part of the county. So I said, I know there's a lot of work that's gone into this plan, but I don't think it's quite there yet. I don't think it's quite ready for approval. So my ask from the board is to not push this to the county commissioners yet, but let's work on it for another 60 days. Invite some other people in. Talk to those farmers, talk to some people from EMS, EMS, and the sheriff's office. There's a lot of concerns there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, that's going to con-
Can I ask a question? Mr. Tyson, what is the current unused empty lot inventory, you might say, in Nash County at this time? Do you have any idea what that might be?
I don't. I think there was a lot of it after the recession, and over the past two and a half years, we've burned through a lot of it. So I don't think there's, there's certainly nowhere near as many existing empty lots, residentially sized lots today as there were two years ago. I think it's limited.
But at this point, around my personal farm, my personal, well, where I live, there's probably 300 to 400 lots available right now, soon to be. Well, you, you know, we've, they've been approved from time to time. But your, Mr. Pike, I think, pointed out while ago, the needed amount of, was that you who mentioned that while ago? The needed amount of inventory was 233 lots, till what, 2040?
2040.
2040? We're well over that number, countywide. And I speak for my farmers, who I deal with, you know, from time to time. And I think what he just said is correct. Our lots are getting too small, and it's dragging in too many outside people. I'm not saying that you're a bad person, sir, that you spoke while ago. You may have good intentions, but there are some people out there I don't think have good intentions. They're after the dollar bill. There you go.
Real quick, that's going to conclude the public comment portion of the meeting, and now we can have discussion from the board. Does anybody have any questions or clarifications that they need from Mr. Tyson? All right.
Let me ask a couple of questions. And in this process, and anybody that's on the committee, the steering committee could answer this question about, when you considered about, about the schools that would be required, or the highway safety, and I was just listening to some of the things that, I mean, how did you guys calculate that in? How did you, how was that incorporated in your decision?
About the school systems and the need for it and the burden?
Because that seems, I hear that, I hear that as being a big concern. I mean, it came up about three or four times.
It was a discussion that was brought up during the meetings, but I'll let Adam, you can probably elaborate a little better on that.
Well, I think it's important to recognize that the governing body that will be approving this board, as well as all future rezonings, is the same governing body that will be funding the school system. And so, if they make a commitment to this plan, they're also making a commitment to adequately fund the school system for the development that they allow. So there's a good, the good part is that they can be, they're not dependent upon another body to fund the school system. They could be mindful of the development that's happening and incorporate into that, that into their budgeting on a year-to-year basis as we go forward.
I mean, do you think there was any discussion about, okay, we've got 1,000 lots, how many school seats that distills down to? I don't know. I mean, and so, we're going to need X number of grammar schools, or primary schools, or whatever.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's calculations at that level, the way you're talking about.
Yeah. And we had discussed one time before, did we ever come up with a value for a home to be the break-even point for expense to the county versus, do we know what that number is yet?
Do not. Any other comments, questions?
Just, I just know that over the course of, over, well over a year, we have had every discussion that you can possibly have, and we've had a lot of, a lot of in-depth, a lot of, you know, we weren't meeting in the middle on a lot of things, and so both, both sides of the argument were brought forward. You know, I don't want anybody out here to think that, I live on a family farm, you know, and, I mean, there was discussions on both sides brought forth, and I just don't want anybody here tonight to think that, you know, this is the first time that the planning board is hearing anything that's brought forward to us. There's been a lot of discussion over the past year and a half on this, so. I don't know that there is a perfect plan out there that is going to fit Nash County or any county, and I say that from, truly from my heart, so.
All right.
While we're on the topic of calculations, I know it was brought up very early in the process with our consultant, Stewart, that forecasted population projection for 2040. And I think we, those, the steering committee all agreed that the data provided in that calculation was most likely inaccurate. It was only calculating the population trajectory of the county, not taking into effect the outside forces on that calculation, being Wake, Franklin now, and Johnston County. outside forces on that calculation, being Wake, Franklin now, and Johnston Counties. I think, I won't speak for the entirety of the board, but I think we can all by head not agree that that population projection is low. So we have to mind that, what might had been a true population projection. I agree with my other steering committee members that there's been a year's worth of negotiation and compromise going into this plan. I myself might want to still continue those debates and to further hone this plan, but I do acknowledge the hard work done by the steering committee and our county staff on this, this project.
Well, there is no more discussion. Do we have a motion? I will make a motion that we move forward with approval of the plan as written. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Three? How many?
Opposed.
How many opposed we have?
Three.
Three to four. Three to five.
It's like it's five to three in favor.
Five to three in favor, so we'll go forward to the Board of Commissioners.
And again, that public hearing is tentatively scheduled for the November 7th regular board meeting to begin at nine o'clock in this room, and there will be further confirmation on our email notification list between now and then. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes the board's business for tonight.
All right, me adjourned.